We had a very short meeting. Just have the problem. Wait, Mark, we have them. No, 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 uh, our first budget. No, you say this is a true story. I want to wrote that down.
Yeah, that makes him the problem.
Next trial. I will see the road. Or I go.
I have not signed it for like up to last page. I know the old, the old game.
I think you're not here, huh?
I think you're not here.
Oh, you're ready? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting order. Stand for the pledge, follow my movements now.
As we choose to the flag of the United States of America, and as you recall, for which stands one nation on her back, invisible with whatever duty and justice is required.
Reminder how everybody's mics on.
Commissioner Robbins. Commissioner Walter. Commissioner Bonning. Commissioner Wessel. Commissioner Campbell.
Present here.
Commissioner Alguayer.
Here.
Chairman Yoder.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have approval of ordinance. Let's see, we got four different sets here.
I move that we approve minutes from the regular session on Tuesday, July fifteenth. Special session Tuesday, November seventh. Close session Tuesday, November seventh. Executive Board session Tuesday, August fourth.
For. supportive discussion. The motions say aye.
Aye.
Votes say nay. All right, next up, we got approval of the agenda. You have any additions or additions? Mr. Robbins.
I'd like to, uh, pull off the consent, uh, five A for discussion.
B.
Five B.
Five B.
Five B, thank you.
That is the due number of one, I guess. Or just go, maybe, yeah, I'll just make it number five. Any other additions or additions? Not on the needed motion.
Will we accept, uh, the agenda?
supportive discussion. Not all favor of the motions say aye.
Aye.
Votes say nay. Period seven zero. All right, next up, we have an update from our administrator. An updater.
No, no specific update since the, uh, executive meeting. For one, uh, concern that we do have tonight on your consent agenda, it's item of three C, the capital improvement plan. And as you recall, we, we accepted the plan from the Plan Commission, adopted certain technical amendments, and then the motion was to approve the plan as accepted. Since that time, we did get some communication from the Treasurer's Office. Get some concerns that the narrative portion had some, I would, uh, some, some statements concerning the statutory functions of the Treasurer may, may not be exactly correct. My recommendation would be that you approve, maintain this on a consent agenda, approve it as was considered at the executive, uh, meeting, and then have a separate discussion of the September meeting if there are any changes to the narrative that is necessary. The reason I suggest that is the statutory obligations and duties of the Treasurer don't change with respect to, yeah, I mean, you can say in the CIP that, that we don't even need a county treasurer, it wouldn't matter. The, the constitution, the state statute would require that you have a county treasurer. So, so that the fact that the duties might be slightly different than what, uh, Treasurer believes are appropriate by statute doesn't matter. You can't change that by, by adopting the CIP. But if there are some further technical amendments that are necessary, that could be addressed at that time. Wouldn't need to delay the acceptance of the CIP for purposes of budget, uh, discussion. Other than that, no other, no other update.
All right, any questions for administrator?
Jim, would that require, that wouldn't require super majority vote though to amend something we've already approved?
No.
Any other questions? All right, if not, we'll move on to first public comments. You have two minutes, anything agenda specific? Do you have any members of the public that wishes to address the board? Yes, sir.
Corporal said Leland, uh, Leland Township. It's just a, a note, it's regarding the whole agenda. I can't hear anything through those speakers. I know we spent ten grand or more on a sound system. It doesn't have to be brought up a lot, but I could, could make out half of what you were saying, but it wasn't real clear, and when you responded, it was when you're off access of the microphone or whatever, it's harder to project out here. So is there any way of tweaking it up before we get into the meat of this?
Just gonna ask everybody to hold it up closer to their mouth.
Well, I don't even know, is it turned on?
Then they're on, yeah. Okay, thank you.
That's it, thanks.
I'm sitting right here, I can't hardly hear you.
Can't hear anything either?
Just swinging out.
This is the bottom, so I'm gonna do a test, can you hear that?
I can hear you, yeah.
Speak forward, sit up straight in your seats like in school, bring your microphone.
Thank you.
Guess everybody's gonna have to speak into it. Sir, you have any other public comment? Right? All right, it's, um, we'll move on to Mr. Comments. Mr. Bunny.
Yeah, I just, um, I was over in Leland, uh, yesterday, and I walked, I walked out onto the, uh, the dam, and that gate that's there is swinging open, and it's actually going across the lodge's walkway. And then there is no, there is no ramp on the, the other side of it. Handicap ramp, so I'm just concerned that we have a gate that's in the, you know, it, it will latch, but it wasn't latched because when I came there, and, and there's no handicap ramp held on the other side of it. I think we're supposed to have it locked. You know, um, if, if there's no ramp there.
We had, we had a request that that gate remain unlocked from members of the public in Leland, and we have the, the side that is on the falling waters lodge, that's their property, they're responsible for any ramp that may or may not, uh, be placed there. The ADA accessibility of that, of that bridge is, is, uh, is, is appropriate. So it doesn't need to be locked, we could lock it, but again, we had a request to be, uh, remain.
I'm just thinking about, it's, we, it was pretty windy, so it was swinging, and it, and it swings out across their walkway. So, I mean, if it, if it doesn't have to be locked, and it doesn't need to be there, we can take it down. It's just put up those screws, and I think we will eliminate that liability.
I'll take that into consideration and see what, or back to our next meeting.
Might, might ask at the park permission meeting, you, you said you were thinking that you were waiting on a, a legal opinion.
That is one thing that we're waiting on, yes.
And that's from our county attorney, sir. Well, uh, maybe until we get it, it might make sense to lock it rather than assume that's gonna come in that way. Regardless, I, I agree with the public, but then again, uh, yeah, statutory requirements and liability.
Mr. Russell?
Yeah, I wanted to, uh, just mention that the Northern Lake Community Mental Health Board has their monthly board meeting this Thursday, and it rotates around counties, and this Thursday will be here at Leland County, downstairs in the community room at one P M. And it's a challenging time for community mental health with lots of, uh, lots of reductions, uh, and your attendance there would, would be informative.
You have any questions, comments? All right. Now, we'll move on to consent agenda. Put note here. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion. Any commissioner may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will automatically be respected and will not need a second. Any commissions that wish to remove anything? All right, uh, I'll take your motion.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
All right, movement supported. You have a roll call on that?
Yes. Commissioner Walter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel.
Yes.
Chairman Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner Alguayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Bonning.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Now, we'll move on to our action items. Number one, we have the Sheriff's Office purchase motors and declare one motor as surplus.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners authorize sales of existing hundred fifty horsepower motor associated with both M two, purchase two Mercury one fifty XL motors from Standard Marine, waive the board policy on bid requirement, authorize the budget allocations described by the Finance Director at last Tuesday's meeting, and authorize the board chair to sign all documents necessary to complete the transaction.
Second.
supportive discussion. Mr. Bunny?
Yeah, I, I still believe we should set this out for a bid. I believe we can have them ask them to bid just on Mercury motors. You know, I, and, uh, that, then we would have to waive the board policy on this. And, and I do believe if we get Mercuries, Standard Marine will repair it if they need it. So I just think if we, we, we should really try to follow our board policy.
Any other discussion? All right, now, all in favor of the motions say aye.
Aye.
Or votes say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried five two.
Where is it to?
Mr. Bunny, Mr. Walter. All right, next up, we have facilities, facilities maintenance department name change. You're all there?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve renaming the facilities maintenance department to facilities ma- maintenance department to facilities in, okay, that was in typo, right?
No.
Add to facilities engineering as specified above.
All right, is this support? Support. Russell, discussion?
Yes, you know, when we talked about this last week, I didn't, I thought, well, I didn't see the, the deal in it, but I was wondering what the cost is. I mean, um, stationary, you know, all those things, I mean, just.
It'd be minimal, stationary, 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 you know. We, we, you know, please reduce. We would use a, uh, electronic stationary, it's, it's, the price has changed. The signage in the building, uh, we believe that's less than, less than two hundred dollars. Don't see any other, any other significant changes.
Do you want to form or anything?
No. If he, if, if they, if they were, they'd be changed as, as, uh, wearing out, that sort of thing, it would be changed as a result of this, this action.
Right, any other discussion? Mr. Bunny?
Yeah, I, I just, uh, believe that this is a little bit grandiose, the call, maintenance engineering, and I believe that, uh, it, it's gonna create, I don't know, uh, I guess, uh, the, the willpower or the desire of the people who are calling themselves engineers to want more money, and I just think that's all it'll lead to that. I just think that, uh, all maintenance or facilities in, um, uh, um, calling it engineering is just, uh, unnecessary, and even if it's only two hundred dollars, it's still a expense that we don't need to do just to change a name because the head of facilities wants to be called an engineer.
All right, any other discussion? Mr. Hamel?
Um, that's, that's, uh, you know, a, uh, that, that is a very valid thought, and, uh, I, I wish I could apologize for what happened to you last week. Um, it's not my job to do that, but let me tell you that, um, things like that should never happen in, in, in a discussion, in a meeting.
Any other discussion? All right, if not, all in favor of the motions say aye.
Aye.
Or votes say nay.
Nay.
I believe it fails two to five.
For the shoot upon in favor of that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I just believe the person doing the job is right to do.
All right, next up, we have item number three, information technology versus the time clock. Mr. Russell?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners, uh, to waive bid policy and purchase Harris Local Government time clock version seven, and employee self-services E S S software is presented with allowance for estimated travel and lodging expenses, funds not to exceed twenty thousand dollars to come from the I T Department capital outlay to Illinois, pending in dot nine seven zero dot zero one zero, and authorize the board chair to sign the quotes for same.
Second.
Just one question for the administrator about that. And I think we talked about it last week, but in no way does this get in the way of or interrupt, uh, or, 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 or be a problem for the, the purchase of new software, whatever we decide.
That, that's accurate. Again, as I, as I said last week, even if we were authorized to purchase a new software today, uh, and that's not going to happen, it would not be implemented for at least twelve months, possibly, uh, eighteen months because, for a couple of reasons, that's, that's the projection we give of most of the companies that we, we look at. That's just because there are so many people converting from, uh, server-based software to cloud software, and all those conversions are, are in line ahead of us. So it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact that, but this is a necessary improvement to our, to our, uh, personal package. And it, and I would, uh, even though the motion is drafted the way it is, I agree with it, we would, uh, gently suggest that it is not really wa- waiving of the board bu- board policy regarding bidding, because you're actually implementing a new module of software that already exists, and we're using an existing vendor, updating their software. I would argue that is actually committed by the bid policy, but the motion is what it is, and I don't disagree with it.
Any other discussion? Mr. Robbins?
Question, um, like, when this wrote, that previous board, you know, they had the Raymond report there, we're still kind of following that report by cornice row? Yes, I think so. And the, the main reason that we're pursuing this now is this has been recommended for a considerable period of time by our league council in terms of properly applying the Fair Labor Standards Act and documenting it in a, in a concise and accurate way. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Bunny?
Yeah, oh, I, I was actually opposed to this at the beginning, but, but after getting the information that I have, and the idea that it really is within our policy the way it goes, I would.
Any other discussion? Now, all in favor of the motions say aye.
Aye.
Or votes say nay. Period seven zero. All right, next up, we have from our administration, potential referral, item number eight, potential referral of items to building grounds. Got a motion?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners authorize the Building and Grounds Committee to consider the issue of the MSU extension office installation of a bulletin board and to review the M, uh, inspection report. Support.
Motion supported, discussion? Mr. Hamel?
Um, I certainly, uh, don't mind, uh, and perhaps it makes sense to have a building and grounds committee look at this, um, but I'd like to also include my thought that I, I agree with some of the comments that were made before. I, I don't want to see bulletins on sides of all of the, all of our offices, and I would consider having like a kiosk out here, something that maybe could be shared if the idea is we need, uh, to get more information up. But there's probably not a department here in this building which wouldn't like, and I understand that, uh, an opportunity to promote what they do, they do a great job, and to also elicit community support. But I don't believe that putting a bulletin, uh, at every office is the best way to do that.
Mr. Bunny?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't want, every office has their, their information in their offices that anyone that I know, but I think that is the way it should be. I don't want our hallways to become decorated with bulletin boards. We have a huge bulletin board outside, and that can be used, and that could be expanded, but it's, it's not, I just don't think, think we have the pictures here, we have decoration, but I don't think bulletin boards are a decoration.
Discussion? Mr. Walter?
The bulletin board we have here is functional. When people come to the courthouse and they need information, and the courthouse is closed, the information they need million times and stuff like that is on that bulletin board. It's a public notice board. Back in the county building separate from here, I don't see that unreasonable that it would be productive for them to use that, a bulletin board in the same manner. I know, that's why I support this. I think that it'll ease their business and their operations to communicate with the public at all hours of day with that.
You mean to use it, use that one?
This one and one there, they're twenty miles from you. Or ten miles. You know, so I, I can't.
This is extension office, right?
Yeah, I thought this was for the extension office up there.
I think this is for MSU extension.
Yeah, right inside.
Oh, right.
Here, yeah.
Oh, man, I'm.
I'm sorry. No, the way I understood, okay, all right.
Mr. Robbins?
I'm gonna call Mark Walter here, but, uh, I think if you read this motion, it's to take it to the board and grounds to come up with some ideas and bring back, and then we can have all the discussion we want.
All right, any other discussion on that? All right, if not, all in favor of the motions say aye.
Aye.
Or votes say nay. All right, motion passes. All right, now we're up to item number four B, acceptance of spring twenty twenty five percent allocations inland seas education association. Mr. Albert?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners accept the two percent grant award from the Grand Travers Band of Ottawa and Chickla Indians in an amount of fifteen thousand dollars for inland seas education association in support of the stewardship of the Leo Creek.
For. It's important discussion. Mr. Bunny?
Yeah, I just, I brought along the, you know, Leland Enterprise inland seas where they just, uh, had over eight billion dollars donated to them, and, uh, I just wondered, if we give this fifteen thousand dollars to inland seas, what other government agencies, whether it's the villages, the townships, the fire departments, the library are not receiving funding? There was over one billion dollars requested, and they paid out four hundred and some thousand. So when we, when we donate this, these tax dollars, these payment and move taxes, I believe we're denying either the county here, or villages, or schools, or fire departments, fifteen thousand dollars. Somebody's supposed to get that for, for to run their government agencies. And, uh, we're giving it to someone who we know about can raise plenty of money.
Any other discussion? Mr. Russell?
I, I, I wouldn't say this except, uh, Commissioner Bunny continues to remind us that he is. I wouldn't say this except Commissioner Bunny continues to remind us that he is serious with it. I am pleased that we can have a very small part in supporting what I think should be real treasure for this county. And I'm pleased that we're collaborating with inland seas.
I guess I have to add, this was not our decision, we're just forwarding the decision made by the county. It's their decision and I'm proud to be able to.
Yeah, I mean, that's a false statement to say that because we actually forwarded them. If we don't forward it. It doesn't, they don't make a decision on it. So we're saying that, that they made a decision, no, we made that. We made the decision on what gets forwarded to the tribe. And then we asked them if they will fund us.
Any other discussion? Not? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Nay.
Fast five two. We're writing for C, two percent allocation of services to state haven and inland seas association. Mr. Russell?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve contract with state haven and inland seas education association. As presented, authorizing your chair to sign an interim agreement for services to state haven. And inland seas education association in order to disperse the award of two percent allocation budget.
Move in supportive discussion? Not? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Nay.
Here is six one. Alright, now we're up to item four D, so late addition AC unit at Central Tower.
We're just asking that you approve, give us the authority to prepare and. Submit. Permit the engineering for that. For that central tower.
Want that worded out? Want that motion read out or?
My motion is done on the EDS that the Leland County Board of Commissioners ratified. The emergency action was taken on the emergency failure of the air conditioning at Central Tower IV eight twenty five. An approved payment of the invoice for the replacement. Marver two ton air conditioning unit quartered twelve thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, which includes control of power wiring. Scared up checking testing with electrical modifications that needed to be provided by others. Funds nineteen six thirteen thousand from five eighteen, that'd be the nine seventy utilizing contingency funds within the tower fund by eighteen.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Okay, so that's not a word of it out, that's a prove of repair.
Exactly.
Okay.
I misspoke.
Do we have a support on that?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Russell? Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Alright, next up we're to consideration or forty consideration of closed session.
Did you want to?
About five eight.
Technically, that's.
Yeah, that's why.
Probably okay with, I guess originally we approved the agenda to have that as five, but.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I would move that we move forward session, yeah, before we do close session.
What was the comment?
That we move number five forward before we go into close session.
For.
Can I just add, is there anticipation of action following our closed session?
Yes, yes, there would be.
I just, you know, always have this thing that if people are here to talk, I hate to see them. Come to the end, but. Discussion. Before we go into closed session.
We have a motion on the floor here.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor right now to move. Five down, just above forty, you know, discussion on that motion? Not? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Alright, now we're to five. D and so agenda MERS service credit purchase. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the resolution that Scott Robinson will be authorized to purchase five years of general service credit for MERS. As described in the application for additional service credit purchase at a cost of approximately ninety five thousand five hundred and sixty dollars to be paid by employee.
Support. Supportive discussion?
The only reason I wanted discussions.
Mr. Russell?
Is I know this is our employees' rights and I'm all for it, that's what I'm going to go for. I thought about it during the week. There we are in the eighth month of two thousand twenty five and. I don't have the exact numbers, but sort of pushing about probably close to two hundred thousand people are employees have paid out early retirement. I think as a board, we should be concerned that there are questions. You know, are we doing something wrong? Why are people buying all these credits? They want out early? Are we doing something wrong? I think it's something that we need to look at as an employer, you know, because this is like used to be, you know, as in the previous board. I mean, I think I saw maybe one, but I mean, we're seeing one every month now. So I think it's just something that maybe HR. You know, ought to just still look into with the kid and. And just, I said, it's just for discussion, but I think as an employer here, I'm concerned that, you know, we're looking good people or finding time to.
Mr. Walter?
You know, this is a common practice where I used to work. Where we had age limit on retirement, so nobody got out early, you could buy all the time you wanted, but you couldn't get out early. You could buy time, you couldn't buy. But as employees get closer to retirement, they start thinking a little bit more about the retirement and how I could best. Use my money to assist me in the future. And while they're making money, this is time to buy that time. So that they can have it in the future. It's kind of like. It's not, it's, I can't put more into my 401K, but I can buy this time. And it equals out the same because it increases my retirement, but I've got a limit, I'm not what I can put my 401K. So the smart employee is looking ahead and going, this is what I want to do. And as people get older and get closer to retirement, they look at that and say, hey, I got to take advantage of that while I still have that. I, I don't, I'm not, because he's still got his time he's got to earn. So I don't really see it as that much of a concern. It's. Employees I think are realizing as they get over that, hey, this is something I should do because they can benefit in the future. It's no cost to us, it's a cost to the employee. So, you know, I'm not sure that it's an indication. If we wipe out a morale. And that's something we need to be considered.
Mr. Campbell? My understanding is this is, I mean, things can go either way, but basically I'm neutral. Financially, this is neutral to the county. So again, I think, I really don't know why we vote on these every time. I think we should just create a policy. And that way the employee doesn't have any questions. They understand exactly where they, where they are and then they don't come. I got one more thing. And I might ask this question, do, I assume maybe we do exit interviews with folks?
We do.
And you would let us know if this, if there are problems that seem to be pushing this issue, if there were recurrence of that.
You know, the only two things I wanted to mention. The reason they require a vote on this is because MERS requires a resolution approving. Resolution by the legislative authority approving these. So that's why you have to vote every time. We couldn't have a policy blanket they approved them at any time. You have to, you have to. Possibility that this would cause additional, additional cost to the, the, to the county. But MERS has such conservative projections on their, in fact, to some extent. I might consider putting money like that into MERS as not as good an investment as you might be able to get otherwise. But obviously this individual sees to the contrary. Because their, because their projections are so conservative. The likelihood of occurring additional expenses is so low that I think it is appropriate to approve these. But the other thing that I would say, and I understand Commissioner Robbins. Comment and it makes a lot of sense, but. We can only voluntarily, that can only be voluntarily obtained from the employee. And they may very well say, this is the reason I want to do it, but I don't want that disclosed to the, to the board commissioners as to why. And we would have to honor that.
Right.
You would, you need to consider these on the financial merits. And based upon my review of the actuarial reports and the way MERS evaluates its, 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 these service purchase credits. There, the likelihood of occurring additional expenses is so low that I would generally approve that unless there's a very, very good reason not to. I don't see that.
Alright, any other discussion on that? Not?
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Russell?
Yeah.
Chairman Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Augeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunny?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. Next up we have item forty, now consideration of closed session, closed session regarding negotiations.
I was wondering if we could have public comment before we go into closed session.
I'm fine with that, just, you know, as far as the public, you know, so the public is aware, we potentially may take action when we come out, you know.
Right.
The rest of the board, how they feel.
Alright.
Do you need a motion to change that agenda again?
Absolutely, so, yeah.
I would move we probably comment on whatever.
Just right after.
We will probably comment right now.
Wait, you're, oh, have a public comment, run up your view of financials?
Sure, I don't know what's going.
No, you're doing it prior to the closed session potentially.
Right, what is above financials?
Based off of this comment, yeah.
Yeah.
My motion says right now.
Right. Yeah, let's go right now.
Okay.
Alright. Any discussion on that motion? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Here is seven zero. Alright.
Good evening. I just want to share a thought that the, the issue of buying out pension plans. Almost indicates that we have a lousy pension plan for our employees. So. I think that would a grain of salt. The, the item I want to talk about again is the item that's missing on this agenda again today. And that's the apology resolution to apologize to the clerk taxpayers and. Regarding the clerk going decision of May eleventh, twenty twenty one. We've repeated this request many times because it's required. And we have provided and will provide the clerk with a complete rendition of events on a ticker. There's like three pages on of all the events that occurred regarding this issue. That'll hopefully encourage you and help you along to actually put together that apology resolution and put that to bed. The other thing is we have come across a commentary by H. Al Mencken. You probably have read him from the thirties. This was put together by a Mr. Budroll of the American Institute of Economic Research. And here's a quote from Mr. Mencken. When we say that it, that is the government, has decided to do this or that. That it proposes or aspires to do this or that. Usually to the great cost and inconvenience. Of nine tenths of us. We simply say that a definite person or a group of persons has decided to do it. Or proposes or aspires to do it. And when we examine, think of, when we examine this group of persons realistically. We almost invariably find that it is composed of individuals. Who are not only not superior to the general, but plainly and depressingly inferior. Both in common sense and common decency. That's a quote from the thirties by Mencken. So all of us that are in public office, we need to read this very carefully over and over again. Because the temptation is so great. For commissioners, special interests, and we've had a few instances of these throughout the years, I've observed thirty five years of it. Where personal interests take over and basically. We, nine tenths of us, they make nine tenths of us unhappy. Thank you.
You have a public comment? Yes, sir.
Steve Tostich, I'm from Cedar. Hopefully I heard that. Thank you for all speaking up. We appreciate that. I've been attending the meetings on a fairly regular basis and. I'm looking for some big ideas on how to reduce cost within the county. It seems like all we talk about is nickels and dimes and, and, but no big ideas on how to, to increase, to reduce cost. Or at least contain cost better than what we do. It seems like everybody has a willingness to spend money that they don't have, that the county provides. Taxes keep going up year after year significantly the past couple of years. And I just would like for more of a focus or people at least aspiring to reduce. Our cost and the burden that's on the taxpayer. Mr. Bonnick, I appreciate you, the allocation of the money that is to a select. Issue or, or group, that money should be going to the county, the county administration, the county operations. As opposed to somebody's pet project or however it's perceived. I think there wouldn't be any, any discussion of whether that money is going to the right place if it, if it went to the county. And supported county activities, thus reducing the burden on taxpayers. So, thank you.
Keith Ashley, Leland Township. President Trump said on Friday that his Russian counterpart Vladimir Putin agrees with him on letting voters send in. Agrees with him on stopping putting the mail in ballots is the way we do things today. And that he's pursuing an executive order to do that. I think it's refreshing to see that our good friend and ally Vladimir Putin is making suggestions that are favorably received. And if you can't trust Putin, who can you trust? This is from astronaut Ron Garin who spent a hundred seventy eight days in space and his observations. And this is partly what he said. What struck him most was the paper thin layer of atmosphere enveloping the planet as a fragile veil standing between. as a fragile veil standing between all of life and the void of space. In that moment, the earth seemed heartbreakingly vulnerable. From his vantage point, Garin saw a planet with no borders, no political lines, only one interconnected home. But on the ground, humanity continues to divide and exploit. Says further, our economy treats the earth as a disposable resource, a subsidiary of profit. To him, this illusion is the big lie, the belief that growth should come before sustainability. Garin insists the correct hierarchy should, should be the planet, society, and the economy in that order. Whether it's climate change, resource depletion, or social inequality, every crisis is linked to our failure to prioritize, prioritize the planet first. Ron Garin's message, delivered with the quiet, quiet gravity of someone who's actually seen our earth from outside, is a plea for awareness and action. He reminds us that we live on a paradise in the cosmos, a world that's incredibly rare, unimaginably beautiful, and desperately in need of our care. Lastly, this is a letter from a, uh, man called Living in the Shadow of the American Dream. I live in Shenandoah County. I'm a factory worker, a farmer, a father of two girls. I get up before the sun and most days I don't sit down till after it's gone. My partner Hannah and I raise our girls on a small farm. She works full-time also. She's a caregiver, a homemaker, a livestock handler, and a mother. She doesn't get a paycheck. She doesn't get a break and she doesn't get counted. We stayed unmarried, not because we don't love each other, but because getting married would kick my partner and our daughters off the Medicaid that keeps them healthy. My employer offers insurance, but only if I pay nearly as much as our mortgage. I can't, so we stay as we are, in love but locked out. I'm ashamed that in a county, in a country as wealthy as ours, people like us are left out in the cold. When the so-called Big Beautiful Bill passed, it was marketed as a win for working Americans. From where I stand, it appears to be the opposite. Cuts in Medicaid, reduced support for struggling families in a ballooning deficit that somehow will still leave us more exposed than before. This bill, like many before, rewards the already powerful while punishing those who hold the economy together in invisible ways. It makes those who lobby and takes from those who labor. I'm not writing this as a Democrat or a Republican. I'm writing it as a man watching families like mine wear themselves thin, working hard, doing the right things, and still falling behind. You shouldn't be able to carry a hundred dollars worth of groceries in two hands, but these days you can, and that's wrong and that's dangerous. I'm writing to ask one simple thing. Who in this country, who is this country really for? Because if it's not for parents doing their best to raise good kids in a broken system, if it's not for factory workers and farmers who show up every day, no matter how little is left in the tank, and if it's not for families trying to make a life for the land, from the land and a paycheck, then maybe the flag doesn't wave for all of us after all. I don't want handouts. I want fairness. I don't want politics. I want policies that work. So if you're in power, hear me. We're not okay. We're drowning quietly. We are not enemies. We are neighbors. We are parents, workers, and caretakers. And it's time we start acting like that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes.
Hi, I'm Dana Genser, Dana Gensinger, Elmwood Township. Uh, I'm not nearly as eloquent as the man you just heard, who, uh, his words went right to your heart and to mine. But, um, I wanted to just, I wasn't going to make any comment tonight, but, um, I heard something recently that rang true for me. And that is we have a bill of rights, but what we should have is a bill of obligations. And to me, our local government right here, I think is pretty amazing. I think you guys do an amazing job. I'm proud to live in Leonel County. Do I agree with everything you do? Oh, heck no. But that's just, that's just humanity. But we can all come here and express our opinions in total, uh, acceptance. And the other thing I also admire doing as a citizen is paying my taxes. Uh, I think it's my rent for living on the planet. I like that we have schools. I like that we have roads. Uh, I like that we have internet. Uh, and that gives everybody in the community a better chance. If we don't have internet in all of our counties, that is not a service to our county. So I do want to thank you for the work you do and say to people, I hope they also feel that being a patriot is also being a citizen who, uh, pays the taxes, knowing that it's for the greater good and it helps all of us. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. All right. So we'll give it a shot at the third and final time at the motion. Situation for the session.
Yeah, I would move that Leonel County Board of Commissioners enter closed session to discuss strategy and negotiation for elected party as permitted by MLC or MCL fifteen point two six eight one C. The following individuals to be included in the closed session, Jen Zwicki and Kathy Hardestwell, as well as our attorney, Mr. Norton.
Second.
Right. Are we okay with that? We're administrating as well?
Yes. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Who's stuck with that?
Mr. Robbins.
Commissioner Bonik?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Chairman Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Geyer?
Yes.
Seven zero. Thank you. All right. Sounds good.
Thank you.
I unmuted.
Okay.
I know this one.
Did I have the contract passed?
Or signature?
Yeah.
Okay, signature.
And everyone's on. Next one.
And there were times too, I got them all on my phone.
Yeah.
Because I say they're timely, I know.
I know.
Really worried I was.
Oh wait.
Well, we're gonna do three, we're gonna make a motion to come up close.
I think I'm safe to plant myself here, aren't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're good.
You're fine.
Come on, guys, we're getting sick of looking at each other. Are they in there or not?
They're out there.
We still need two more.
What?
Two more.
Commissioners, yeah, have to round them up.
It's open two minutes and ten seconds, so. Unmuted.
No, I'm aware of it.
One, maybe get some more, you said.
Oh, no, I didn't.
Jan is in there, just put her in there and toss down the table.
Yeah. Everyone, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
You first.
I owe you a pause, yeah. Can't blame you for all your meetings, because he told.
Ah, he's terrible, isn't he?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know why.
How could, you know, you couldn't miss this one. We wouldn't have been out of here itself.
Well, although, you know, we were out really good for the one this afternoon. I wonder why that was, that he got out.
Sorry.
See me?
Well.
All right.
For the reasons.
All right, thank you. I need a motion to come back in.
So, Lou. Second one.
Reported a question. It's motion by Commissioner Alvar, supported by Mr. Walter. Session discussion. All voters say aye.
Aye.
Go to CNA, period seven zero.
I move to ratify the successor collective bargaining agreement with the FOPLC road sergeant, FOPLC correction sergeant, FO CLB correction division with the changes set forth in the actual total tenet of agreement that may have been ratified by the bargaining unit and authorized by the board chair to sign the successor collective bargaining agreement on arrival of this form and the county's, by the county's speaker of council. Approval of this form by the county's speaker of council.
Support. Moving to supportive. Vote call can not be voiced. This is part of the voice fund. All right. All voters, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All voters say aye.
I move to ratify the initial collective bargaining agreement between the FOPLC and State Department of Land Unit, which has set forth the applicable total tenet of agreement that has been ratified by the bargaining unit and authorized the board chair to sign the collective bargaining agreement on approval as to the form by the county's speaker of council.
Second.
Supported. All voters, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Go to CNA. Period seven zero. You, stuff, we have you, financials.
Okay. Claim, claims and accounts, there was a late, late, there was a hard copy on your desk. Any questions regarding the reports?
I just had one in that, I mean, I saw on page twelve there, uh, where they do long distance calls, I mean, I just didn't think anybody did, didn't have to pay long distance anymore, someone like seventy-six dollars, I mean, I know it's not a lot.
Page twelve?
Yeah, and I, I. I don't, I think it's from the post audit.
Oh, post audit, okay.
But I'm just saying, I just wondered that the, are chip plates, do they have to be maybe long distance calls?
I know about long distance.
I think the long distance that you're looking at is, we have a one eight hundred number that's out there, so we have to pay for the one eight hundred number, when people calling on that number.
Oh.
Right, point.
I just thought it was on, but I, that makes sense then.
We had it in you. A one eight hundred.
Right, because it's two pice number. Okay, well, I guess that answers, it's a one eight hundred, understand it.
Thank you, Jen.
So I'm looking at this, we get the national park money. We could, in the future, put that towards parks. We get it every year.
Just payment and move.
Yeah.
Real tax, so.
It's the PIL, just, we can stick it in our head, but that's a thought.
What do you want, what's money perks?
We do.
Boston.
Just a thought.
Well, currently, you do pay part of that to the townships.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, this is, this hasn't been paid out yet?
It has been.
To the town.
And then, and our portion was, uh.
Forty-two?
Seventy-two thousand six nineteen was paid to the townships, and the, and it came in at one forty-two, but we also use part of that money to pay for your radios.
Right.
The PIL funds were subject to the Motorola, um.
Radios.
Radios years ago, so it's a transfer, the general fund transfers into supplement the lease payment, all of it, yes.
And you, yeah, you've got a payment right now, and one more next year, and then I think you're gonna be reconsidering your radio situation in the near future.
So then we could do it for a special park thing.
I think your townships are still expecting some money.
All right, any other questions? All right, now, turn on to special reports by staff, commissioners, affiliated agencies. Reports. All right, commission comments? Robbs?
Um, just like to add one thing, maybe you're kind of unaware of it, but I kind of looked at one way to get to previous commissioners we had here, one I met here a few months ago, and he's a pretty cool guy, be around, uh, he's down in Ann Arbor right now, fighting for his life, and it's probably all right, so.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, so, I thought, prayers, uh, he's got an infection as well, so. I didn't look good, but, uh, I've been reading on social media, he's a cool guy, he's a long way to go.
Commissioner comments?
I guess I'd add one more, one pad, um, last, yeah, last week, it was kind of nice walking out of here after the meeting and ran into one of our maintenance workers outside here, just had a nice talk with him about working here, and, uh, his, uh, thoughts of, what's doing for Alaska, totally, I said, the pride that he takes in taking care of the outside of this building, it was just nice, and I just felt like, you know, we gotta give credit to their employees, and it was just nice, yeah, he's very shorty here, takes pride, just, ground's here.
Any other questions, comments? All right, I would be remiss if I wouldn't tell everybody that, well, the best is coming this week, so, um, I'm going on now. All right, brutal financials.
Sure. You've got some amendments in front of you, um, we needed to re-allocate charges to the departments for the telephones that were purchased in April, that's a good portion of what this amendment number nine is about, it's also showing you how we capture un-vegated revenue, take some pressure off of fund balance, this also keeps up with your fees for attorneys that are not coal stoker that we have for other issues. Also, fronting engineering money for the drain commissioner for Schaumburg, Timberley, Little Glenn, and drain number one, keeping up with those expenditures. So, this is some housekeeping on the general fund, and this is amendment number nine. I can do one at a time, how would you like me to go? One? Okay, number ten, this is also the funds.
Oh, I, I, I add one, I, I meant, make it into one.
Well, I've got, like, three different budget amendments, okay, Michelle, did you want to enter, say something? Oh, go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd make the motion, the motion to, to approve, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five amendments, number twenty-five zero zero nine, twenty-five zero zero, twenty-five zero count, and twenty-five zero eleven.
Support. For the discussion? Not, all voters, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All voters say aye. Period seven zero.
Thank you. Any questions, ask away, and then fund transfer twenty-five oh oh five, this is to transfer funds, so we can make Motorola payment for the radios, and fund dispatch for another quarter.
I move we approve fund transfer number twenty-five zero five.
Order. Order discussion? Not, all voters, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All voters say aye. Period seven zero.
Names and accounts?
I, I make a motion that we approve claims and accounts for five hundred eighty-one thousand dollars, five hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred fifteen dollars and twenty cents.
Four. Support discussion? All voters, say aye.
Aye.
Go to CNA. Period seven zero.
Make a motion that we post audit for two million five hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred and six dollars and ninety-three cents.
All right. We support a discussion? Not, all voters, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All voters say aye. Period seven zero.
Thank you.
Return.
Can I think?
Yes.
When did we, are we, these all? And then just call it hospitalization?
It's Buchausch-Buschel, it's what we charge each department.
Somebody in announcements, please?
Yeah, I got my.
And I, it's spelled.
Oh.
That, but you can question them later.
Oh, yeah, lovely.
Yeah.
Sign this, everything. Still is a mischievous, came on a run.
How did you, how was the organization, that's what it's called, you know, you help insurance. I mean, insurance, I'm sure it's, we'll get confused that it was.
Hey Kathy, did, did I miss that, that comment? Anyway, that report where you kept track of the fund balances, was that last week?
Turn off yours.